Now start the meeting.
Frank Barrar.
Here.
Marshall Goff.
Here.
Lilly Duncan. Gary King. Jim Malteau. Vice Mayor Jimmy Marina.
Here.
Mayor Ryan Kennedy.
Here.
Yes, we have the prayer and the pledge to be given by Mayor Kennedy today.
Let us pray. Lord, we come here tonight on Holy Thursday and remember what you did for all of us. And we ask that we that be a good example to the world and we give that light that you taught that you spoke of in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation, indivisible, and every justice of all.
This time we have some special presentations.
I have to adjust the microphone. I am somewhat vertically challenged. A proclamation. Whereas childhood should be filled with joy, hope, unconditional love and acceptance. And whereas tragically, far too many of our young people spend this foundational time of their lives in fear, pain and uncertainty enduring abuse neglect that threatens their health and well-being. And whereas child abuse is an ever-growing tragedy across America that affects the lives of every one of us. And whereas child abuse prevention is a community responsibility and finding solutions depends on involvement among all people. And whereas we need to create greater public awareness of the problem of child abuse by educating everyone we know on the seriousness of this social malignancy. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs that benefit children and their families and work diligently to ensure that children are raised in a safe nurturing environment. And whereas this year's theme, Thriving Children and Families Prevention with Purpose reminds us all to work to eradicate this blight on our society. Now therefore I, E. Ryan Kennedy, Mayor of the City of Clarksburg, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2021 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Clarksburg. And encourage all citizens to work together to help reduce child abuse neglect significantly in years to come. And witness whereof I have heretofu- I have hereon two set my hand and have caused the official seal of the City of Clarksburg to be affixed this first day of April 2021. E. Ryan Kennedy, Mayor, City of Clarksburg, and that right City Clerk. Ordinarily, um, we would have somebody here, um, to accept this. However, it's it's my understanding that due to, uh, um, some COVID, uh, issues, uh, the person that was supposed to be here, he is not here. So we will get it to them later. But I will just say, um, that anybody who knows me knows I've dedicated almost my entire life to fighting for abuse and neglect in children. So of all the proclamations I've gotten to give during my time as mayor, this one probably means more to me than any other. Thank you.
For the proclamation, same evening. Pleasant people of us, nation of the earth, the greatest office, best office, not only in West Virginia, but in the United States. Here's the address area of the county, my lead, what you've done, you'll go, you'll understand. Whereas the most important shot involved is the next one, those wise and insightful philosophers quoted by Ben Hoiberg. And whereas with many other accomplishments like Carson Bray in golf and the game of golf, it appears that Carson has insane insight. Whereas when Carson requested to compete on February 11th, 2009, Carson was seen blasting clubs and balls since he was born. Whereas before his, his sixth birthday, he played his first nine hole US against golf tournaments in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. Won six of seven tournaments. During that fall season, earned Carson Player of the Year award. Whereas his performance qualified in six and under US kids' world championships. Connerswood, Carolina, wherein 2,500 players were in attendance representing 50 countries. Whereas being the one and only representative of West Virginia at the championships, Carson finished in third place. Whereas Carson has been playing six world championships at his current age of 12. Carson has won the 205th Golf Championship across the United States. Whereas Carson has won three national Player of the Year awards on the hurricane junior golf floor and has won an unprecedented six straight Northeast Regional Championships. And C V Golf, C V Golf, he scored in Miami City, New Jersey. Whereas in 2020, winning 11 tournaments at the Hallway Tournament, Carson earned the West Virginia Player of the Year award. And completed the year winning the Dogma Golf Junior Championship at Connerswood, Carolina. Now therefore I, E. Ryan Kennedy, Mayor of the City of Clarksburg, do hereby recognize that talent is killer. Carson Bray in pickleball, uh, and command him on his many achievements. And further, the City of Clarksburg extends best wishes to Carson for much future success and expresses appreciation to Carson for his proud representation of the City of Clarksburg. In this period, I am adhering to set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Clarksburg to be affixed here to this first day of April 2021. E. Ryan Kennedy, Mayor, and desk, every line of city clerk.
Better hold it up for a picture. Better hold it up for a picture.
He does his talking on the golf course, right?
Hey Carson Frank needs lessons.
Yeah, I also need lessons. My handicap is so bad. I have a special placard for my cart.
Next we have approval of the minutes, the regular session, March 18th, 2021.
So moved.
Thank you.
Without objection, minutes are agreed to.
Next we have petitions, communications, and public hearings. Our first speaker tonight is Michael Brown, a 1324 Addict, Avenue, and he's addressed counsel. First, he has a narrative.
Uh, good evening, folks. Uh, I've been actually, uh, about two weeks of festering of wanting to speak tonight. And I had a lot of, uh, notions of writing out a timeline of how many times that the narrative that has come out of this building has been against the Waldo Hotel project. I decided not to do that because what I'm trying to push is to change that narrative. I know everyone looks at, they're a member of this, this body that looks at the Waldo and they think it's, it's too far gone. It's too expensive. It's not worth it. It's not, just not worth the effort and it should come down. But all the other facts state otherwise. Uh, in 2015, uh, the Waldo group, when it was, uh, in full existence, brought in a top expert, uh, by the name of Steve Kuhn of Kuhn Restoration. Uh, right now, Mr. Kuhn is working on a $30 million project in Wheeling, taking the, the tallest and biggest building in Wheeling, the Wheeling Pittsburgh former headquarters and turning it into market rate apartments. $30 million project that he's taken on. He came here free of charge, no, no charge to the city, no charge to the Waldo group, on his own volition. Spent hours on multiple visits to the Waldo and then did a presentation where he told, meant for, unfortunately, all former members of, uh, council, members of the county commission, members of the governor's representatives. That not only was the Waldo doable, it was, it was a piece that was going to be the catalyst to revitalizing downtown Clarksburg. Ironically, it, he, in his other statement, he said, unfortunately, that his, the last thing that he would suggest any city do was a theater. Just for the fact that it's not a revenue generating pro, uh, item all the time. Whereas something, if you converted the Waldo into a mixed use facility with multiple, uh, revenue options, it would be there. That's what he said, the catalyst. And he put, it put an estimate of 15 to 18 million before tax credits. Which are now higher than what he estimated in where the state has increased the tax credits. What I'm asking for is that the narrative needs to change. We, we've heard for so many years, the narrative of, you know, we gotta fight Vendalia. We gotta, we gotta demolish the building. We gotta do this. We gotta do that. We, this body needs to quit being an inhibitor to progress. What we need to look for is that this council, this administration is a facilitator. And I'm not asking for this body or the taxpayers to finance the Waldo. What they need to be is they need to be there where they're saying, come on, let's, let's help with finding a developer that can kick in. Let's find that, uh, let's help market this building to where it's becomes a viable option. Where we're not going with the, the rhetoric of it's an eyesore. It's not that worth it. It's not, it's past its prime. We, we need to work on being that facilitator to where the Waldo becomes an icon in the city, to where we're proud of it. That we're not looking at it as a, that too far gone item. Because the unfortunate part is, I think if we start erasing those icons of our skyline, then we're going to start having the conversation of Clarksburg being too far gone, not worth it, and past its prime. Thank you.
Next we have Brian DeBar of 118 Wayford, Leeway, wishes to address counsel of economic development.
I actually did dress up a little bit nicer than this, but Michael and I were checking the Waldo. As we walked out, we saw Will Hyman and stopped to talk to him for a second and a pigeon relieved itself on me and Will. And, uh, I had to take the shirt off, wash my hair and face. Uh, I want to talk to you. I was walking, uh, the other day through downtown in this building right back here, um, that I've never heard, once heard anybody complain about this building. But it has a notice on it that it's condemned and it says, uh, owner must provide an engineering study, uh, certifying that it's safe. A rehab plan with a reasonable cost estimate for reasonable time. Um, it doesn't say exactly what's wrong with the building and I've, I've looked online and that's, it's about 50/50 whether cities actually state what's wrong with the building. So I'm not going to complain about that. I will just say that anytime I've been pulled over for speeding, I know exactly what I did. I'm fairly confident that it's probably just the broken windows on the front of the building or something because I looked up the certification of the inspector and he's not certified to inspect commercial structures. So it's probably something small. And I think if, if people knew what that was, they would probably be outraged that we're considering demolishing that building. Another thing I've been hearing a lot since I've been back in town over the last week is we need to listen to people who've put money into this town. Well, I got last, uh, last fall, I went out and spent a lot of money. I've been saving money since I've just been sitting around the house during COVID. A nice computer and some software to play with maps and you know what the most expensive privately owned building or the highest value assessed privately owned building in downtown Clarksburg is? It's the Palace Building. It's significantly more valuable than any other piece of privately owned real estate in downtown Clarksburg. But for years, Joyce and I, we, uh, we've all sat here and heard from various people that Vendalia are slum lords and that you need to take that building down. From what I've calculated, they pay $200,000 a year into the downtown TIF. They are funding your demolitions downtown. And why don't we listen to investors? Is this how we treat them? I've also heard, uh, unfortunately, a lot about the need for parking downtown. We need more parking. We need more parking. Well, you can go over there on Pike Street and there's an enormous parking facility. And you know who got you the money to build that parking facility? Well, it was Vendalia that worked with former Governor Manchin to get that money for you. They've actually done a lot of good for this town. They've brought a lot of money into this city government. They continue to bring money in actually, even though they don't have any money. And they don't currently own that building. That project is paying for half the demolitions that we do every year. And I'll just leave you with the, uh, comment or the notice that it's actually illegal to use federal money to demolish a building that's on the federal, uh, historic land, it's a federal historic landmark, which that building is. Uh, thank you.
Okay, next we have Angela Oliverio, wishes to address counsel of VA pickleball courts.
Hello, counsel. I am here to talk about pickleball and the pickleball courts that are located out at the Veterans Memorial Park. And I did bring a pickleball paddle, just so everybody could see what a pickleball paddle looks like. And I brought one of the balls. Okay? And, um, also, I would like to hand out, with your permission, I'd like to hand out, uh, some pamphlets that I had made for each of you. So, um, I'll quickly.
Thank you.
So I would just like to quickly tell you a little bit about myself. My name's Angela Oliverio. I'm a city resident. I love living in Clarksburg. I've lived here for 42 years and I am married to Mario Oliverio. He's right there. Um, four years ago, we began playing a sport called pickleball. Well, pickleball is the fastest growing sport in America and it's ages for eight, for ages eight to 100 years old. Uh, in fact, Carson, I was hoping he'd stick around so I could maybe put a pickleball paddle in his hand. It's a little golf boy. Um, so anyway, it really has changed our lives for the better. We get to great, we get great exercise and the best part is we have met a lot of wonderful people and made many new friends, not only locally, but from other states as well. We have competed in tournaments and actually have won some gold medals. I can't tell you enough how much wonderful this sport is. We laugh and we have such a wonderful time. After playing for a couple of years, I was asked to become an ambassador for the USA Pickleball, representing Harrison County, West Virginia. So what does it mean to be an ambassador? Well, it's a volunteer position who promises to promote and grow the sport of pickleball. We play as a group at the YMCA, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, during the fall and winter months. And we play at the VA Memorial Park during the spring and summer. Just about every day, including weekends, there are people playing pickleball at the VA during nice weather. I see more and more seniors coming out to play all the time. It's a sport where a grandparent can actually play against their grandchildren and they could probably win. It's true. It's a sport that is changing lives all around the world for the better. Once you start playing, you just want to keep on playing. Here locally, we now have over 240 members in our Harrison County Pickleball Facebook group. These are members, they're players who want to come and play and we have future players who want to come and learn. I am here to ask your help financially to upgrade the courts at the VA park. Uh, the park board staff has been great to us. John Cooper and Jan, Johnny and Julie has been great. They've gotten us temporary nets. They've had the trees trimmed back. And two years ago, the park board made some upgrades to our courts, but unfortunately, the courts began to crack and peel almost immediately, which can cause the balls not to bounce correctly. Uh, and also we don't have proper fencing on our courts. Um, when you're playing, the, the balls go flying clear crossed and, um, but anyway. Um, I just wanted to say that, uh, we would like to have the courts upgraded to be USA Pickleball standard, which would include having permanent nets and the proper fencing. Um, we, as our group, we've had pickleball clinics at the park. We've had tournaments and pickle in the park picnics at our beautiful VA park. We love holding the events there. It's so lovely and people have an absolute wonderful time. Uh, we are so lucky as well because the, uh, courts are lighted, um, and so in the evening time, a lot of times we're out there playing too. Uh, we want to have some future larger events, but we need and we want to be proud of our courts. Our courts, in my opinion, are located in one of our state's most prettiest parks, the VA park. It's just beautiful. I mean, if you're out there even in the fall time, the leaves are just gorgeous, the trees, it's just, uh, it's sometimes, more there in the evening, like with the sun setting, it's breathtaking there. It's just beautiful. So anyway, um, now Bridgeport, they built a state of the art complex called The Bridge. And we are having a pickleball tournament there this October and it's going to be called Pickleball Battle at The Bridge. Now The Bridge, they have four indoor pickleball courts. Okay? Well, they're not considered a dedicated pickleball court. Dedicated is when it's a court strictly just for pickleball.
Ma'am, I hate to interrupt you, but.
Okay.
If you could try to, to wrap it up.
Absolutely. Yes. I'm just, uh, just a couple more minutes, please. Um, I wanted to let you know, we have a lot of people that come and play out at the VA court with us from, uh, different, uh, states. Um, and it's really nice, especially in summer because you have this, the Clarksburg Splash Zone. You know, people will come, let their kids go swimming and then they'll come and play pickleball with us. Well, the problem is, is if you look at the pictures, uh, that I have submitted to you all, uh, these are, this is the condition of our courts right now. When you, they're just, you know, you can see they're all cracked. And, uh, this picture here, these are the, uh, they're, they're temporary fencing. They're all falling apart. Uh, so anyway, I wanted you to look over, uh, the condition of the courts. And then this picture here is what we would really like to have in the future. These are what courts look like all around the United States. Um, I mean, this is the fastest growing sport in America and there's so many people playing. I've submitted, um, to you also Wainsbury, Pennsylvania, which is not that far. Their citizens, they came before council and asked them for help, uh, to get their courts redone. I've, uh, submitted a proposal of what, uh, Vasco Sports Company had did for them. And I've got pictures of their courts before and after. And also the last page, uh, there's pictures of different events that we've had out at the park. Um, so that's what that is. So what I'm asking for you all to please take into consideration of upgrading our courts. Um, so I would be happy to get estimates, um, from the company, but I'd like to have your all's support. You know, so when I call, I can say, hey, you know, I've got the city behind me, uh, that are, is possibly willing to help us, you know, upgrade those courts. I mean, they really, they don't look nice. I mean, we got the splash zone right there, you know, right beside our courts and, uh.
I'd, I'd like to ask the city manager if you would give the Parks Department a discussion.
I did talk with them. Yes, I, I sent an email to Mr. Cooper. Um, and, um, I'm still waiting for him to return the call. But I'm looking at possibly maybe $50,000 possibly to get them.
And, and hopefully when our city manager talks to Mr. Cooper, then we can maybe, you know, no pun intended, get the ball rolling.
Okay. Well, I'm going to, um, like I said, I sent him an email.
Are those courts that are there now, are they dedicated or that, is that a tennis court?
Yes, they are dedicated. Yes. And then right beside them is the tennis courts. So, I mean, yeah, we have eight dedicated pickleball courts, but out of eight, uh, we only really have four that we can use. Because the rest of them are cracked or, like you can see from the pictures that they're not in good shape at all. And I feel if we have a professional company that specializes in, uh, pickleball courts and tennis courts, I feel like, you know, we might have a better chance of them doing something that will stick and, you know, stay and last longer.
Thank you very much for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you so much.
Next we have Mark Schaefer of 211 North Sixth Street, wishes to address counsel regarding Ralph Diddy.
Thank you and good evening. As I mentioned at the last meeting, there are things we can learn from other communities. What's the first impression of Clarksburg do you think a visitor sees when they enter Clarksburg? When I arrived in Cove, Ireland, the first thing I noticed was how clean the streets were. Not even a cigarette butt in sight. Then in town, in town, I saw a sign, cigarette butts are litter and a 3,000 euro fine. That's $3,600 in American dollars. As I traveled Ireland, Scotland, England and France, I noticed the same thing. When you go out to Emily Drive or come down Joyce Street exit or Second Street exit, you could probably pick up a thousand cigarette butts. Another thing our state does not do is cut the grass regularly on their right ways inside the city. Maybe two or three times a year. They only clean the expressway once a year. Ironically, our citizens get notices of violations if they do not keep their grass cut. Most citizens and visitors do not know these are state maintained roads. So how do we deal with this image of our city? How much time would it take for our city street sweeper to do the expressway once a week? The state road uses prisoners to pick up litter. Why can't we use them to keep the right ways cut every other week in the city? Why can't we use them to keep the rightways cut every other week in the city? Maybe if we talked to the state, they would trade us some rock salt for doing their maintenance. I noticed a couple of weeks ago in Fairmont, the Fairmont street sweeper was sweeping the Watson Bridge, which is a state road bridge. So, they are doing it to keep their community clean. Too often, city officials are either skeptical or afraid to ask the state for help. When I was on council, we had a problem with arson around the city. And sometimes, these houses would sit for five and ten years before being removed. President Clinton appointed me to a board on regulatory fairness, so I know some about federal regulations. Houses that burned and have not had an asbestos examination are considered to be a hundred percent contaminated, which means they can't be dumped into the city's landfill because it is not approved for asbestos disposal. Astabasis is a rock. It comes out of the ground. So, with my knowledge and relationship, when I was on council, I approached the governor. He hadn't me meet with the secretary about getting Clarksburg's landfill approved to accept asbestos, so the city could use its own crews to tear down burned-out houses and dump it in our landfill. I brought this information back to the mayor and the city manager, and no one followed up. In reality, it wasn't their idea, so they did not follow up because maybe I would get credit for it. Same with the city Tiff district. I had to push for years to get it done. It was a no-brainer, and it has collected millions of dollars for the city. In the nineteen eighties, Senator Robert Byrd agreed to put funds into appropriations bill to upgrade the exits through Clarksburg. We got all the approvals from the county and the city council and the city manager. Then, the mayor at the time went behind our backs and went to the state and said the city was no longer interested in doing that. I questioned that mayor about it, why he did that. And he said, "Well, we're going to build a city hall on the corner of Third Street and Pike Street, where the Warren Burnside building is." Well, it never happened, so we lost out on that opportunity. We got a two-point-five, a two-point-two-five trillion-dollar infrastructure bill that's coming up. And it's going to be first-come, first-served. And the rules say that you have to get the congressmen and senators behind the bill. We have an opportunity to upgrade US-50. US-50 in Clarksburg was built in the fifties. When I was just ten years old, I was selling lemonade to those people building that road. Now, we can get millions of dollars' worth of construction work done in the city of Clarksburg that's going to generate tax revenue for us, but we got to get on the bandwagon. And so, we have to, we have to work hard and we work fast. Maybe the state still has the blueprints from the eighties. I had them at one time, but heaven knows what I did with them over the last fifty years. Okay? Okay. Another thing we need to look at too is water mains. You know, I don't know if you know it. Most of our water lines in the city of Clarksburg are over a hundred years old. And Water Board approaches them, once they start having leaks, then they'll, they'll do maybe a block. Okay? Okay. So, I would work on, working with the Water Board, so that we can get the water mains replaced in Clarksburg. Again, that's a ton of BNO taxes for the city. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, next we have the city manager to report an update.
City Hall will be closed tomorrow, Friday, April second, twenty-twenty-one, in observance of Good Friday. The beautification committee met last week to discuss plans for a small park on the corner of West Pike and South Third Streets. The next meeting will be held on next Wednesday, April seventh, at four-thirty here at City Hall. There will be a ribbon-cutting ceremony on Thursday, April eighth, at eleven AM for Michael's on up on Emily Drive. Welcome to our great city. We are working with a company to create an app for the city of Clarksburg, where you can quickly report issues, track complaints, receive notifications from the city, and see upcoming events. This app will coincide with our website. From the police department, patrolman Kane Bender and K-9 Officer Asta will start training on April fifth, twenty-twenty-one. The department responded to two thousand five hundred and fifty-four calls for service for the month of March. The Coffee with the Cop event held last week was a success with multiple officers from the city of Clarksburg and the Harrison County Sheriff's Department on hand to answer questions and concerns from the public. We are working on hosting another event next month. From the fire department, all firefighters have been re-certified in CPR training. Testing for the fire chief, captains, and lieutenants have been performed this week. After the waiting period, the results will be posted and made official. The department responded to two hundred and sixty-two calls for service for the month of March. From the finance department, the annual levy estimate for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two was completed and submitted to the West Virginia State Auditor's Office. A copy is posted on our website. First quarter BNO tax returns were mailed out in our due April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. If you did not receive one, please contact the finance department. The city is accepting proposals for financing for the new ladder truck, agent of record for workers' compensation insurance, and property and liability insurance. Please see our website for the deadlines for submissions. From the city parks, PepsiCo has been awarded the contract for the furnishing of soft drinks for the AMP and Splash Zone. The pool will be drained, cleaned, and filled as preparations begin for the season. Lifeguard certifications will begin in the middle of this month. Fiber optic cable is also being installed at the AMP with the help of our IT department. Elected officials from Ripley, West Virginia, were provided a tour to see our operations at the AMP. The Robinson Graham Performing Arts Center, the doors open tonight at seven o'clock PM for April's Fools and Evening of Improv Comedy with the Fearless Fools. The next public event is the movie screening of Instant Family on Sunday, April eleventh, at three o'clock PM. And seven private rentals are scheduled for the month of April. From code enforcement, the department issued fifty-eight building permits for total project cost of four hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents. Twenty-one notice of violations and zero citations were issued. Five structures were condemned, and two were moved to the demo list. Nineteen residential and five commercial inspections were performed. Fifteen vehicles were tagged for removal, and five off-seat off-site designs were removed. Animal Control responded to thirty-three calls for services with nine animals taken to HCAC. For public works, spring cleanup will begin next week. Please check our website or call for details. Crews installed one hundred and ninety-seven feet of new sanitary sewer pipe. The department also secured various condemned structures throughout the city. The twenty-twenty-one pavey project is being finalized for council's review. And work has begun on a slippery prayer on winding way along with a phase four storm-water separation project. For the wastewater treatment plant, we have received thirty-six applicants for the position of plant operator. The list was narrowed down to five candidates. The interviews will be conducted next week. The plant treated approximately one hundred and ninety-seven million gallons of wastewater for the month of March, and that is the end of my reports.
Okay, next we have unfinished business. Consideration of second final reading of public hearing of an ordinance of the city of Clarksburg to amend section five oh seven point oh five of the codified ordinances to modify the penalties for the lack of restraint of dogs and cats.
We're not open this public hearing. Anyone who wants to speak for or against this ordinance may do so at this time. We're not opposed to public hearing. A second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Under new business, we have consideration of first reading of an ordinance of the city of Clarksburg to amend section seven forty-five point forty-five to add a tax credit for a new business location with construction costs.
Counsel, I ask that we table this until the, it can be tightened up and secured and. More tease across the eyes of the public, please.
Can we have a second on that?
Sure.
All in favor of tabling to the next meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. That was, that was, and that was actually discussed, for those of you who weren't at the five-thirty meeting, it was actually discussed that our city attorney wanted to make a few more revisions before we consider it. So, we're just bumping it in one meeting.
Consideration of election officials, coworkers for the general non-Clarkson election to be held in the city of Clarksburg on Tuesday, June first, twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Consideration of placing the proposed amendment to section five of the city charter to provide for the direct election of the mayor on the June first, twenty-twenty-one municipal general election ballot.
Move. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The proposed amendment will be on the ballot June first.
Consideration of appointment to the municipal building commission.
I move that we reappoint Billy Lopez to the municipal building commission.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Counsel, comment.
Counsel Malfojo.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, I would, since we're going to get into a agreement with the owner of the gallery mini-ball, I would like to see those windows covered until which time we will be demoing that building. You know, I've had several calls from citizens, and it's just a high sore. And I think, you know, if things goes planned, the building will come down in the April. But just in case it doesn't, I'd like to get that high sore covered up, please. Also, I'd like to, again, iterate to the citizens of Clarksburg. If you see something, say something, no matter how miniscule you think it is. Call nine-one-one and let our police officers sort it out. And thank you, everybody, for coming, and happy Easter.
Counsel Ferrari.
Knowing I have evidence, I don't have anything to suspect. I have evidence. We show all our fellow council members and city employees. Happy Easter, and also to the citizens of Clarksburg. Everybody, stay safe.
Counsel McGolden.
I just wanted to say congratulations on the testing. I know we're still got to go through the processes, but the testing's been made with the fire department. And congratulations to everybody that is about to be promoted. It's a big step, and I'm sure that everybody down there is worthy of the promotion that they're about to get. So, I just want to say congratulations on that. Happy Easter to everybody, and it's good to see people here. Thank you.
Just a couple of things real quick. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. It's nice to have a big crowd here. Got some candidates here and some people passionate about the Waldo. And, you know, between me and one of the candidates, we kind of started that conversation. So, just to comment on it real quick, you know, I have a high amount of respect for all you guys. Michael, you're the only one left here now, but you guys that are passionate about this thing. Through different times of my involvement in the city, you know, I was passionate about it a long time. I was actually, I've been to meetings for the group to save the Waldo at times over the past. It just, it just feels like it's gone a long ways. And I totally see what you're saying about not being against it. But, you know, if, if there was a possibility, if I thought there was a glimmer of hope, I would be the number-one tier leader. But I'm just not feeling it. It is what it is, I guess. Just a couple of things on the manager's report. The complaint app, that's awesome. I think that's definitely really important, and I'm glad to see that rolling. I think that's something that we wanted to do a long time ago, and we're just now getting around to making that happen. The simpler and more accessible that we can make complaints for the citizens, I think that's a great thing. You know, we want to have a very streamlined process where they feel like it's easy to make a complaint, and hopefully, it's getting to the right people quickly. I'm really excited to see that, how it works out. Really pleased that we're working on that. I want to really, really thank the fire chief, chief police, for a grant he secured for our ladder truck. About two-thirds of that, he got paid for what we were going to have to finance. So, that is absolutely amazing. Thank you very much, sir. Big props for you. And that's all I have tonight.
Mr. Christ, mayor.
Thanks, everybody, for coming out. Happy Easter. Well, I wanted to hit a couple of things real quick. First of all, I'm also excited about the app. Years ago, when I was on city council, my wife and I had taken a business trip out to California, and we were staying in this small tourist town. And that town had an app you could download free on your smartphone. And that app literally told you everything you could possibly want to know about that town. It told you all the bus routes and how many minutes it was going to be before the bus got to you. It told you all the restaurants, and it actually made you make, let you make reservations. It told you about every art festival and other thing like that that was going on, and you could even buy tickets through the app. It was amazing. It was an amazing app. And I brought the idea back to council, and this was the pattern of the old council at that time. Nobody cared. So, I'm not saying that the app is going to be that awesome right off the top, but it, but I'm glad we're getting an app. And I'm hoping that as time goes on, more and more features will be added. And so, eventually, we'll get to that point where we have just an awesome app that any tourists that comes to Clarksburg will be able to find out anything they need to know, have a great time in Clarksburg. So, kudos to our city manager for getting that ball rolling. Also, tonight was the final vote of council regarding direct election of the mayor. It is now going to be up to the citizens of Clarksburg on June first, and early voting as well. You all have the opportunity to decide whether you want to be the person to decide who sits in this chair, or whether you want council to continue to decide that for you. So, I, I personally hope that it passes. But we shall see what the people of Clarksburg say, and ultimately, it's your city. So, make it what you want it to make, make it. And because it is April Fool's Day, I did play an April Fool's Day prank, which I'm going to reveal now. Counsel Malfojo, would you look at your nameplate, please? And so, for those, for those of you who didn't notice. Jeremy Jam, actually. Jeremy Jam is a fictional character. He's a councilman on Parks and Rec. And he kind of looks a little bit like Jim Malfojo. Google him later. And so, I just thought that'd be kind of funny. So, April Fool's, and your real name plate is under the desk there.
That's fine. That's good. All right.
Happy Easter, everybody. And that'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed? For adjourn. Thanks, everybody.